The Hammond City Council will now come to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm asking for special prayer for my uncle who's been in and out of the hospital for the last two weeks, as well as one of my coworkers who has been diagnosed with breast cancer. Heavenly Father, we come before you asking, Lord, for favor and guidance and direction, Lord. We ask that you guide us and direct us so that we can do the job that's set before us. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Clerk Golick will call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas. Higgs. Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from March twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen.
It's motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Kowinski to accept the minutes. Uh, is there any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes pass. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, March twentieth to April third, for council meeting, April eighth, beginning with claims dated March twenty-eighth and ending with claims dated April third. Claim number one-six-one-one through claims number one-eight-one-four, for a total of five million, three hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and six cents. I so move him.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Kowinski to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Have an amendment, claim number one-eight-one-five. Two hundred dollars from the promotional account of Councilman Henosa to, um, today, not tomorrow, it's, uh, some kind of speaker that's gonna be talking to the kids at Purdue University Calumet.
Second for that motion.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to accept the amended version of the claims. Is there any discussion on the amended version?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
I believe it's, uh, two hundred total, one hundred from the council and one hundred from, uh, myself, Councilman Henosa.
Any other discussion on the amended claims? Clerk Golick will call vote on the amended claims.
Markovich, yes. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. amended claims passes, eight-zero, one absent. Now the claims as written. Any discussion on the claims as written? Clerk Golick will call vote on the claims as written.
Markovich. Yes. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, eight-zero, one absent. Public hearing, there is none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Overcomers walk-a-thon Tuesday, April ninth. On Tuesday, April ninth, the students of the city Baptist schools will participate in the walk-a-thon held at Lemon Lake Park. The purpose of the event is to help raise funds for the eighth graders and senior trips. Seniors will visit Washington, D.C. and New York. Junior high students will visit Indianapolis, Indiana. All junior high and high school students will walk a distance of five miles. All junior high and high school students, training in the maximum, uh, attending is a maximum of twenty-five, will be allowed to participate in the walk-a-thon. All grades, grade school students to a maximum of twenty dollars will be allowed to participate in a separate walk-a-thon. All students, uh, training and fifty dollars will be enjoyed in exercising time of bowling. Students will also enjoy lunch and various sports activities in the park. Money should be turned in. You're a homeroom teacher each morning on or before April ninth. Sincerely, John Brexis, President, Principal, forty-nine, twenty-five, School, Soul Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two-seven.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Push for Excellence, East Side Community Council. Push for Excellence competition featuring experts from Dr. Revan, Martin Luther King Jr., Historic Speeches. This event is open to students first through twelfth grade. Our goal is to increase student achievements by providing opportunities that celebrate students and speaking, public speaking. The contest is designed to focus on young people and empower the elements of positive speaking. Win Saturday, April twentieth, two thousand thirteen, Redeeming Word Church, sixty-nine, forty-seven, Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. Time, one P.M. If you're interested, please contact Leroy Howard, two-one-nine, seven-four-six, one-five-five-nine, or you can email at E S C C four-six-three-two-oh at yahoo dot com. Michelle Chambers at seven-seven-three, two-five-six, two-seven-six-two.
Any other committee reports? Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce, two thousand thirteen, Lakeshore Chamber, Crosstown Classic, Chicago White Sox versus Chicago Cubs, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. All seats in the lower level, box seats, section one fifty-four and one fifty-five, option A. Bus, beverage, foods and tickets, one thirty-five dollars each. Must be twenty-one years of age. Option B, tickets only one-ten each. To reserve, for more information, contact Monique at Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce, Office nine-three-one, one thousand.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Council as a whole's gonna bring out council ordinance thirteen-nineteen.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance is the third and final passage.
Ordinance number thirteen-nineteen, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. And ordinance permitting ordinances eighty-eight-eighty, eighty-nine forty-two, eighty-ninety-one, ninety-sixteen, ninety-seventy-two, and ninety-one-twenty-four, creating a voluntary retirement program in two thousand thirteen for certain eligible employees of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Uh, Clerk Golick, will you mind reading that ordinance, please?
Whereas the city of Hammond has many employees who are eligible for retirement with retiree insurance and/or Medicare due to age and years of service with the city, and whereas the city of Hammond is committed to providing quality services to citizens while reducing the budget in accordance with the mandates of House Bill ten-oh-one. And whereas the city of Hammond, in furtherance of these goals and in response to these mandates, must reduce the number of employees currently under city payroll and self-insurance. And whereas the city wishes to have a reduction in workforce with the minimum number or terminated or laid off employees, choosing instead to let those desiring to retire to do so. And whereas the city of Hammond, by its mayor and its council, wish to create a voluntary retirement program and make it available to certain eligible city employees, and whereas the voluntary retirement program is created to address the budgetary cuts and budget crisis facing the city, and will be created and available for a limited period of time in two thousand thirteen and will not be a permanent program. And whereas the city of Hammond deems it necessary to establish a voluntary retirement program for certain eligible employees of the city of Hammond in order to observe and be consistent with the requirements of the public employee's retirement fund per rules and regulations. And whereas the city of Hammond would offer incentives to the eligible employees which would be paid upon the conclusion of their employment upon retirement and would not be an additional compensation of their salary as fixed by the salary schedule. And whereas such voluntary retirement program is not a pension or retirement fund as per preempts all other public employee pension or retirement funds. And whereas such voluntary retirement program would not affect any other retirement fund such as police and fire, which are authorized by state statute and are governed by state law and regulations and are not eligible under this program. And whereas eligible employees wishing to benefit from this program would be required to sign up for the program and complete all necessary paperwork no later than Monday, July first, two thousand thirteen, and retire prior to December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. And whereas an employee who signs up for the program cannot withdraw after Monday, July first, two thousand thirteen. And now therefore be it ordained by the common council, city of Hammond, Indiana, that a two thousand thirteen voluntary retirement program be created and funded as follows. Number one. Eligibility. To be eligible for the voluntary retirement program, a person must be a current full-time Hammond city employee who currently possesses, A, sixty-five years of age and ten years of city service, or B, sixty years of age and fifteen years of city service, or C, rule of eighty-five employees as defined by PERF. Two, program benefits. Eligible employees are defined above who voluntarily elect to retire and register for this program by July first, two thousand thirteen, and actually complete the retirement process before December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Eligible employees will have until July first, two thousand thirteen, to decide to accept the program, and reject, and rejection of the program shall not entitle eligible employee to these offered benefits at any future time. Once an employee retires under this program, such employees shall not be eligible for employment as a full-time employee of the city of Hammond, but may work in a contract capacity if necessary. Funding for the two thousand thirteen voluntary retirement program will come from the department budget or shared ten percent of gaming funds. For each employee participating in the program, a position may be cut from that employee's department. Participating eligible employees shall be entitled to receive, A, a one-time voluntary retirement program award of one thousand dollars for each year of employment completed prior to retirement with the city of Hammond. For example, ten years of service would equal ten thousand dollars. B, continue to be covered as a retiree under the city of Hammond insurance. Such retiree status would require the city insurance to be secondary insurance subordinate to Medicare or subordinate to other employers if and when the eligible employee finds other employment that provides health insurance. C, eligible employees electing to participate in this program will be required to sign a release, waiver and voluntary retirement program agreement. The waiver and agreement will advise the employee of the rights and responsibilities under the program and advise them to seek independent legal counsel prior to the signing of the document. Three, severability. In the event that any court or other entity having jurisdiction finds any provision, section or part of this ordinance to be invalid, it shall not invalidate other provisions or sections of this ordinance. Now be it furthered deemed that here in ordinance shall have full force and effect from an after-passage approval by the council, signed by the president thereof, and approval by the signing of the mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
That's my question would be in regards to, I think it's a great ordinance in regards to dealing with the employment rate in the city, but my question is the budget, uh, the share ten percent of the gaming funds, is that gonna affect each, each district councilman in regards to our, um, funds just allocated per district?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
If, uh, if this, Councilman Higgs, in response to your question, and if this year turns out like past years, there's gonna be very little employee, uh, it's shocking actually how few employees take advantage of this program. They sort of roll their dice, you know, assuming that they're not gonna be cut, so. But when you look at departments like the Parks Department and the Street Department where thirty, thirty, forty percent of the people have been cut, they're taking a gamble by not taking the buyout. So if, you know, I think, what was it, in two thousand eleven, Attorney Cantor, two people? Less than, less than five people, less than five people participated, so. If this year's a heavier, we're talking about ten people, Councilman Higgs.
So that'd be equally divided amongst the district councilmen?
Actually, shared ten percent, I, I mean, where's, is that the primary source?
No, that's the seventh pot of councilmen.
Excuse me, gentlemen, do we have a second on that ordinance?
Oh, we haven't, I'm waiting for every, till the mayor with, uh,
I apologize.
To make the motion, yeah, we have a final passage on thirteen-nineteen.
We needed a second.
We didn't get a second.
We didn't make a motion.
I didn't make the motion.
We didn't make the motion? We're under discussion then, okay.
Wait a minute, point of order.
Before you can do discussion.
Point of order.
Okay, Dan, make the motion.
Point of order. Point of order, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The point of order is that in reality, before we can even go into discussion, there has to be a first and a second.
That's correct, I've been.
So we need to bag up and get the first and second, then we can go into discussion.
That's correct, thank you. Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Final passage for thirteen-nineteen. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Markovich. Now let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
My, my question again was in regards to, uh, the ten percent. I know it may be a small amount of employees throughout the city that may retire, but, uh, is there approximately amount of money that will be taken out of the ten percent share?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I just spoke with the city controller, he had a great answer, as I figured he would. Uh, we have to, you know, this comes out of shared ten percent because, let's say in the Parks Department, for instance, four or five people took advantage of the program, that would put an undue burden on one budget like that, so. It comes out of the shared ten percent, and Councilman Higgs, you, that doesn't affect, you know, what you do in the third district at all. Shared ten percent, quite frankly, we've been funding college bound out of the shared ten percent and other federal matches, so. This isn't gonna affect you or the projects that you have in the third district, Councilman. That's the long and the short of it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'm looking up the ordinance for, uh, Riverboat Gaming. We cannot leave the shared ten percent of gaming funds in here. It has to be taken out because according to the gaming ordinance,
Good point.
It says sixty percent shall be dedicated for each of the city's six councilman districts and shall receive ten percent for a total of sixty percent. Ten percent shall be used as follows. Two and a half million annually for the college-bound scholarship. Wholly or in any of the six districts for infrastructure work. A ten percent match of sewer improvements or repairs when infrastructure work is done. The remaining thirty percent shall be used for one or more of the following, and that's what the mayor uses his thirty percent for neighborhoods, citywide economic development and so forth and all of that.
Mr. President.
So really, we cannot leave the shared ten percent of gaming funds in this ordinance because according to our ordinance, gaming, we're not allowed to use that money for something like this.
Excellent point.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, uh, first off, Attorney Cantor, I just got done talking to her and it's her birthday, so I wanted to say thank you to Attorney Cantor for being here. Working with the city council on her birthday, I'm not gonna say which one, but anyway, um, she said that the way that ordinance was written up, Councilman Markovich, is an amendment to the gaming ordinance just for this tax year, until December thirty-first. So actually, if it's passed, you guys are amending the gaming ordinance for, just for two thousand thirteen. Which has been done before, Councilman.
Well, I mean, I guess.
If, if you pass it in the current form, that's what you're doing, is amending the gaming ordinance for this year.
What's, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So in all due respect, we should've actually amended the gaming ordinance prior to introducing this legislation to the council.
This is all part of the same thing, Councilman. It's not a permanent change to the gaming ordinance. It's not gonna be in the, in the record books of Hammond as a permanent change. You're talking about one-time budget change.
But in the future, you may come back next year, Mayor, and say, hey, we need to do this retirement again. So and then it could, it could become a part of our.
Or you guys also could change it and make it come from self-insurance or something like that, Councilman. The important thing for me in the administration isn't where the money comes from. The important thing is the flexibility you're gonna allow us with this ordinance. So if you don't feel it should come from shared ten percent, I don't have a problem with that. If you want it to come from self-insurance or some other fund, I have no problem with that, Councilman, at all. That's not the important thing. The important thing is we need this passed. If you don't feel that that's the proper place for it to come, no problem.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be to the mayor in regards to you say it's important, and so in, in essence, what are you trying to convey to us as a body, a legislative body of this city?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I made it very clear last time, and I'll say it again, Councilman. It doesn't matter to me, as the mayor, what pot of money funds the buy-out ordinance. It doesn't matter. If you don't feel that that's proper and your council agrees with you, I respect that. I think, I'm, I'm just asking that this, in some form or fashion, get passed to give us the flexibility to reorganize, which is what we're doing right now. And I think that a lot of people in the council would be proud at some of the moves that we're making. It's a very good move, I think, for the, for the city.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So I guess my question would be in regards to that, so if you don't fund it through the ten percent share, where are you gonna get the funds from?
But we have to have funds for it, Councilman. I'm saying if you don't wanna fund it from the shared ten percent and your fellow council members agree, then fund it from self-insurance, fund it from some other fund. I, I mean.
Well, then that would.
It's not important to me that it's funded from.
I guess the question would be to, to our controller as to what would his suggestion be?
Mr. President, is that okay, the city controller's?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. What was the question, Councilman Higgs, please?
My question is, the ten percent share is in this particular ordinance. If we were not to pass it with the ten percent share, how would you, uh, fund those retirees?
It would depend because right now the unknown is the number of employees that are gonna take advantage of the buyout. And as the mayor stated, if we had an apartment, um, let's say a smaller department like engineering, if four out of the ten engineering, uh, employees were to retire, those employees would be eligible for buyout funds, and if it came directly from the engineering budget, it would decimate that budget. And as such, the engineering department wouldn't have funds to continue doing the, the ordinary course of business throughout the year. So there has to be a secondary source of funds to be able to use in that event. In the event that there's some department that has a, or you could have a small department. I'll give you an example, the planning department has two employees. They have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar a year budget. One of those employees has been here for thirty-five years. If he were to take the buyout and retire, a third of their whole year's budget would then go to pay for that employee's buyout, and they would be without funds to sustain them through the rest of the year. That's the reasoning for having the secondary and supplemental source of funding to fund the buyout.
So in, in essence, what you're saying, if not, it could jeopardize those departments?
That's correct, and in most cases, Councilman, the shared ten percent won't, won't be touched. In most cases, if you have a budget such as mine in the controller's office where I have ten employees, if one retires, I certainly have room in my budget to be able to absorb the cost of paying for the one, the one buyout.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I, I brought it up in the caucus and, um, you know, different things and, um, as far as, um, when somebody comes back. And I brought it up like what's happening in, in, in the town of Munster with their schools where January first, uh, the superintendent and several other department heads retired on June first, and July first, they hired them all back, they all took their pension and they hired them all back as consultants with the same amount of salary with no reduction. They also hired a bunch of, well, they didn't hire them, they had about thirty teachers that did the same thing, that they retired and then they hired them all back for the same salary. So it wasn't really saving them other, any money other than the retirement benefits and health insurance. The thing about this is we're assuming that when somebody retires, they're at that golden parachute. This used to be to call the golden parachute, when somebody worked their thirty years, they're at age sixty-five. They're gonna collect social security, they're gonna go on Medicare and everything. What's been happening though is, you know, some of them have been retiring earlier, and then they know that they're coming back either as a part-time employee or gonna work for, you know, a couple days a week or whatever. When somebody retires, hopefully, uh, you know, God bless them, you know, they, they put in their years of service and granted, they have a lot of experience. But when somebody retires, hopefully, somebody that wants to move to Hammond and, and, and take, you know, with the college bound, if they're gonna raise a family, but they also need a job too. So it would be nice that some of these younger people would take the job and work for the city and then be able to support a family. So that, and, and I explained all of that in, um, you know, and I agree with the mayor and Mr. Golick, Clerk Golick hit it right on the head when, when he had drastic cuts from seventeen to ten employees, he had to bring a couple people back and they had all that experience. And so that, my, my original thing was to say that nobody that took, anybody that took this buyout cannot come to work for one year. But Mr. Golick, you know, has changed my mind and he brings up some very valid points. The only thing, and I agree with the mayor, and, you know, we're doing it now July first instead, instead of September first. The only thing that I, I would say is that, you know, if we had an ordinance that says that anybody that took the buyout, that when, um, one of these previous employees come back, it has to be done by ordinance, and at least the department head has to come before the council, and he's gotta sell it saying, hey, you know, I need this employee to come back, I have the money in the budget. And now what we're finding out, they may not have the money in the budget, but, you know, they're gonna take the shared ten percent and, you know, they can get this, um, you know, consulting contract too, so. But, you know, that's, that's part of the job is, is the, is the city council as far as the budget and so forth and all of that. And, and we're not trying to, or I'm not trying to, you know, you know, the mayor has a big responsibility to run the city and everything else, and, you know, that, it, it could be a good deal, and, um, we're just trying to, you know, to make sure that we have some control and know what's going on. But, you know, if somebody takes the buyout and then, you know, one month later, they're coming back to work, and it's happened in the past, and it's because of certain is, is issues that when, when somebody leaves, they, they leave with a wealth of experience and sometimes that experience is needed. I know that, um, like in the water department, I think it's Gary Williams, he's retired. He's probably been gone, I don't know, three or four years already. And, you know, they hire him back as a consultant, you know, like ten thousand dollars, and I don't know if that's for the whole year or whatever and so forth and all of that. But the guy that took his place, I guess, is not qualified to hold the proper license to be in that position, so they have to hire Gary Williams back because he has that, um, I guess you could call it that sheepskin or that certificate that qualifies them, that they have to have somebody to do that, so. That, because of planning. Hopefully, you know, like what they do in industry when somebody is, um, getting ready to retire, that somebody has been groomed or taught or educated to, to take right over. So hopefully, that's, you know, what the plans are for here. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I just wanna make a couple of quick points, and I have to run, and I apologize. Um, I wanna point out one of the advantages of a buyout. When you're going through reductions, um, and I, I'm sure you guys could talk to Attorney Berger and, and, you know, a lot of you've been on the council long enough to realize this, is when you go through reductions and downsizing, as we have been doing over the years and still plan to continue to do so, one of the unfortunate results of downsizing is litigation. You know, maybe you, you're downsizing, you let somebody go and that person felt that they were let go for this reason or for that reason, and maybe that person files a lawsuit against you, and we all know that that lawsuit has no chance of survival at all, but we still have to hire lawyers and defend the city and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you get the little blurb at the end of the case that says, oh, the city of Hammond won this case. One of the nice things about the buyout is they waived their rights to the city as part of that agreement. And we've been very successful in downsizing without litigation because of things like this, Councilman. It's almost like an insurance policy. If you're gonna take the buyout, you have to sign on the dotted line that says, I agree that I retired voluntarily. And that saves us money in the long run, Councilman, so. I know how you feel, I appreciate it. I could tell you, and for what it's worth, I don't plan on hiring a lot of the people that retire. I don't plan on it. You know, if we bring one or two back, that happens, but I'll be honest with you, it's not our plan to do that.
Mr. President. Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
I, I don't think it's our legislative goal to hire and fire. I think that's administrative staff's position. Our job is to set laws and boundaries throughout our city. And so, in that essence, I, I speak in terms of, of addressing the issue in that aspect. On the other hand, you look at some people that do come back and benefit from, and they make more money as a consultant than they did in their regular positions. So, that's my question and my concern, but, you know, on, on the other hand, you know, I don't have the ability to hire, neither do I have the ability to fire anybody in the city of Hammond. But, the reality of it is, is that we set the boundaries and the laws that exist. So, if there's a particular ordinance that comes up, and Councilman Markovich, if you want to address it in that form or fashion, I think that would be the appropriate way to respond to something of that magnitude.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Just one quick answer, and I'm going to leave, I promise. Um, I hear a lot of people talking generalities about people that retire and come back and make big money. Please point this person out for me. Please. Point out that person. I'll tell you one person I knew in the sanitary district, happened without my knowledge, and I took care of that myself. Okay? I don't like that either, Councilman. I don't like that either. If you retire, go off into the sunset. Okay? But, if you're retiring, you plan to come back and make big money, that's stuff I have very little tolerance for, and I have a track record on that. So, if, I mean, when you speak about the city being that way, please, point the person out. Please. I have a lot of people that work for me.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Well, Mayor, I know that you missed part of the caucus, but Bobby Lindy did bring that up.
Well, no, I talked about one employee, but she wasn't a high-ranking employee.
Oh, okay.
She worked literally less than five hours a week, maybe 10 hours a week.
But, she came back-
And she wasn't the boss.
She came back at $90 an hour, instead of $30 an hour.
No, 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 no. We're not talking about the same person, then. The one I'm talking about does bookkeeping.
Right, that's the-
The one I'm talking about, no.
No, the one that Bobby brought up is when, when Barb Cardwell retired, when he came in, and that-
Oh, but, but, Councilman, that's not fair. She filled in for Bobby when Bobby's wife had a baby, and Bobby was gone for the first two weeks he took over. She filled in for two weeks.
Well, I mean, he brought it up, so-
She been back since? Two weeks. At the beginning, and you been in controller how long?
Four.
So, four years ago.
Contract, capped $20,000.
And she failed for two weeks because Bobby couldn't be there because of his wife, and then she hasn't billed since. I mean, that's helping us out, Councilman. That helps us.
Well, I, I, I mentioned that. I mean, I'm not, you know, but you said if anybody, and I told you so.
No disrespect to the council, I got to leave. I appreciate the lively discussion. Have a nice night.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, my, my question is to the mayor, or Bobby Lindy. Probably Bobby Lindy. Um, what, what percent, uh, because I'm looking, I'm just throwing a figure out there. Uh, let's say 10, I, I mean, there are 64 eligible employees to take this program. Uh, if 10 of them, uh, in this year takes this program, and they average around 30 years, uh, that's 300, that's 300 years. Uh, 300 years times $1,000 a year. I believe they're getting $1,000 per year. Now, we're looking at $600,000. My question is, what percent is college bound taken out of, uh, the shared 10%? Uh, what did we have last year from shared 10%? Uh, coming out of college bound, and what was left over?
Two and a half million a year for college.
Mr. President, ma'am? Two point three or something. Councilmembers, Councilman Hinoza, thank you very much for the question. Last year, college bound, um, was supplemented in the amount of $2.5 million from the shared 10%. Our statute, uh, our, excuse me, our ordinance caps the shared 10% at the $2.5 million figure. Now, last year, we received in gaming, uh, somewhere around $34 million. Okay? So, there was additional monies above and beyond the $2.5 that were in the shared 10% pot. Those usual, those additional monies are normally and usually used as our local match for state and federal infrastructure projects. Some of those, last year included the 169th Street, uh, re, rebuild. Um, I'm not sure exactly which the, what the cross streets were on that project. Um, this year, we're using part of the 10% match for some of our other state roads that are getting rebuilt. Um, a lot of times, the state will build a road, and they'll build it to very basic minimum standards, and we'll want to do things like decorative lighting. Like, on Kennedy Avenue, we did that. We put decorative lighting, you know, in between the expressway and 169th Street. The state won't pay for those sort of things. That's what usually comes out of the shared 10%. Further to answer your question regarding the number of employees that potentially may take the buyout, there are 64 on the list. If 10% of those employees take the buyout, that's six employees, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's a lot, assuming 10% are going to take it. So, I'm, I'm estimating on the high side. So, if six employees take it, and each of them have 30 years, um, they're each going to be receiving $30,000, or $180,000 total. Now, for the most part, those six, those six employees will most likely come from five or six different departments. Those five or six different departments will hopefully be able to absorb each of those employees that are retiring. The issue may come in, Councilman Hinoza, if all of those six employees were to potentially come out of one department, such as engineering. If six out of the 11 engineering employees retired and took the buyout, the engineering department would then be unable to absorb the full cost of paying for the buyout, and would then have to look to the, the balance in the shared 10% fund to supplant the, the monies that, that are going to be needed to be paid out.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
What I'm, what I'm looking at is, um, are we at a point right now where the college bound is taking so much money out of the share percent, the shared 10%? And I believe if we're going to fund the college bound program, that if there's not enough in the shared 10% to cover the college bound, then it's going to come on these six dis- or consuments, uh, amounts. Is that correct? Are, are we, are we at that point yet, where if we, uh, take 180,000, 200,000 out of shared 10% for this buyout, that it's going to wind up, uh, cutting the pot in that shared 10%, and there won't be enough in there for college bound, and it's going to wind up taken from the councilman additional funds?
Mr. President, and Councilman Hinoza, uh-
Controller.
The answer to that would be no. Um, by definition, the shared 10% is 10% of all of the money that we receive from the boat. College bound can at, at most take 2.5 million of those funds. That means, as long as we collect 25 million from the riverboat every year, college bound is completely paid for out of the shared 10%. If we, if we were to drop one year below a collection of 25 million, um, then the question would be valid, and it would be a point. There, there would be funds that would have to come from someplace else. But, since we've gotten casino revenues, I don't believe we've ever dropped below 25 million. And as a matter of fact, since, I think since all of you guys that are up there have been in office, I don't think we've ever dropped below 30. In fact, we've been in between 30 and 42 for the last 10 years. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
And, and that's fine, too, but in essence, though, college bound, I mean, absorbs quite a bit of casino money, and, um, you know, a lot of, I understand it's important, and it, and it helps, in, in terms of, of those parents that are struggling, trying to make sure their kids get a, a feasible education and, and, and a learning environment. But, the reality of it is, at some point, we have to realize that, you know, we got to spend that money in our city to make it better. So, I don't know how many years we're planning on funding college bound, but at some point, it has to come to a halt.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
The thing that bothers me is, it was kind of scary, is if we had six employees go from the engineering department, I would think that, um, from a responsible administrator, that we wouldn't let all six of them go. You know, how could you? Because you'd deplete the whole department, you know? And now, you wouldn't have anybody there to, to run a department. But, according to this ordinance, they'd hire them all back anyway, part-time, or as a consultant, then to run the department. So, I would think that if that should come about, that, you know, you can't let everybody, you know, uh, leave from one department, or three or four, because if they're key employees. But, if they're key employees, according to this ordinance, they're going to hire them back as consultants, or part-time, or whatever. It's almo, like, again, like I said earlier, it's a, it's a double-edged sword, which, you know, can come back to haunt us. Because if we really want to try and lay people, not lay them off, but eliminate them so that could cut back for reduction in workforce, it's not going to happen that way. The only other thing is, if, if they could only allow one or two people, and six want to go, I would think the first two people that signed off that want to leave would be the ones that are leaving, and the other ones, you know, we're going to get their services for the following year again. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of holes in this thing and everything, and, um, you know. I, I, I know I, I, I made a discussion in, um, in the caucus, and at this time, I'd like to put a section D in here, that says, "All past employees must be approved by city council ordinance before rehire." I so move.
It's motion by Councilman Markovich to have a second for an amendment.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I need to hear that clearly again, what was stated by Councilman Markovich.
Councilman Markovich.
All past employees must be approved by city council ordinance before being rehired.
Get that, Clerk Golick.
No.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second on the amendment? Amendment fails. Clerk Golick will call, vote on 1019, 1319.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Ordinance 1319 passes, eight to, one absent.
President O'Pinker, that concluded the, uh, reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 13 dash 20, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali. And ordinance permitting ordinance number is 3947, 4307, and ordinance 8383, also known as section 156.20 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to plumbing permit fees in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move, uh, that it goes to, uh, second and third reading, uh, ordinance 1320. I so move.
As first and second.
I'm sorry, first and second reading.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
What committee?
Council as a whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item B, ordinance number 13 dash 21, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali. And ordinance permitting ordinance number 3947, also known as section 156.11 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to plumbing registration procedures and fees in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance 1321 goes to, uh, the council as a whole in first and second reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item C, ordinance 13 dash 22, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali. And ordinance creating a new chapter of title 15, land usage of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to limited criminal background checks for contractor licenses issued in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance 1322 goes to first and second reading, to council as a whole.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion? First and second, are alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes, council as a whole.
President O'Pinker, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Uh, resolutions?
Item A, resolution 13R-13, sponsored by Councilman Hinoza. A resolution recognizing and honoring the contributions of Caesar Chavez.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Can I have the clerk, uh, read that in its entirety, please? Mr. President?
Councilman Hinoza.
Yeah, move for, uh, final passage of 13R dash 13.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hinoza, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Can I have the clerk's office read it in its entirety, please?
Whereas the common council finds that Caesar Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, in San Luis, Arizona, near Yuma. And as a youth, he worked full-time in the fields with his family in Arizona and California, moving from farm to farm, harvesting crops from the fields. He served in the United States Navy during World War II, and when he returned from service, he married Helen Fabella, with whom he had eight children. Whereas Caesar Chavez again worked in the fields, but he began to fight for change. He took part in his first strike to protest low wages and poor working conditions. Oh, but within several days, the workers were forced to return to work in the fields. And whereas in 1952, he became part of a group called the Community Service Organization, and began urging Mexican-Americans to register to vote. He traveled throughout California and Nevada to make speeches in support of workers' rights. He became general dictator of CSO in 1958. Four years later, however, Chavez left CSO to form his own organization, the United Farm Workers, and in 1965, he and the United Farm Workers led a strike of California grape pickers for higher wages. And whereas, in addition to the strike, the UFW encouraged all Americans to boycott table grapes as a show of support for the farm workers. The strike lasted five years and attracted national attention. Senator Robert F. Kennedy and a Senate Subcommittee investigated the situation. Senator Kennedy gave Mr. Chavez his full support. And whereas, in 1968, and several times thereafter, Mr. Chavez fasted to commit his movement to nonviolence. Taking his cue from Mahatma Gandhi and Dr. Millet Jr., he urged nonviolent resistance. His dramatic act did not solve any immediate problems, but it focused public awareness on the problems. And whereas in 1980s, he focused on the danger of pesticides, he organized a national grape boycott, and went on a 36-day hunger strike to protest the use of pesticides. Thanks to Caesar Chavez, many people became aware of the dangers of pesticides. He put an end to terrible working conditions in the United States, not just for Hispanics, but for everyone. As he said, "The fight is never about grapes or lettuce, it's always about the people." Therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Hammond, that the City of Hammond honors and recognizes the contributions of Caesar Chavez to the United States of America and proclaims his birthdate, March thirty-first, as Caesar Chavez Day in the City of Hammond.
Mr. President?
Councilman Hinosa?
Yeah, it's been, uh, twenty years, it's going on twenty years since, uh, Caesar Chavez passed away. Uh, since that, they they've named, uh, parks, uh, for Caesar Chavez, uh, libraries, schools, um, they've also, uh, done this in, or they've done this in California, Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, uh, there's state holidays, I believe in four states, uh, Colorado and California are two of them. Uh, there's also a US, uh, Navy stamp on one of the Navy ships, uh, uh, named after him, and, uh, there's also a petition going on throughout the United States to make, uh, March thirty-first a federal holiday in, uh, memory of, uh, Caesar Chavez.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
I pass.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
Those of you old enough to remember, uh, when you could walk over to a steel mill and get a job, uh, I am, and I did that when I was somewhat younger, and while working in the steel mill, I noticed a lot of boycott grapes signs and bumper stickers, and I asked the crane man, because I didn't know, I said, "What does that mean? You guys aren't eating grapes, you know, what what does that mean?" Well, he gave me, uh, an education on on Mr. Chavez, and of course, you know, as the ordinance says, it really wasn't about not buying grapes so much as it was about people, but he was one of the early pioneers and using the boycott to point out inequities. And there were many, you know, that have, were doing it back in the sixties, and, uh, so I I'd like to be a co-sponsor of this if I can, I mean, if not, that's fine, I would definitely support this resolution.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
I make a motion that we put everyone on that, um, resolution, I so move.
Carmen, put us all on it as a sponsor. Carmen, roll call, put on resolution.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Mr.?
Higgs?
I have a point of order.
Councilman Higgs?
It was never second to put everybody on there, we get, we gotta get a, a, a second on that, so then you can go ahead with the roll call. That's the correct way of doing it.
There was second.
No second was made. All, all it was, was a motion that we all be put on there, nobody said second to that.
Second.
Okay. Now we can have the roll call.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Hinosa?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen R thirteen passes, eight zero, one absent.
Thirteen R dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the City of Hammond by the Hammond Fire Department to enter lease agreement for two fire trucks.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali?
Move for final passage of thirteen R dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Count, Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. President?
So I I yield to Mr. Spitali.
Councilman Spitali?
Can I have Chief Smith come up and explain, uh, to us the name for these trucks?
We're gonna replace the two rigs at Station Seven and Station One, they will become spare rigs, and the two spare rigs we're going to get rid of, 'cause they're almost twenty years old.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Uh, Chief, are they in deplorable condition, those two trucks?
They're, uh, nickel and dime us to death, the the spare ones are, I mean, they're, they're twenty years old, and it's, they they go in service when one of our other ones breaks down for a short period of time, and... So, I mean, we need to replace them, and the two rigs that are gonna become spares are, uh, I think one of them's eleven years old and the other one is twelve years old. The ones we're getting rid of are almost twenty.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
It says lease, are we gonna own these things after the the fifty, sixty-one months are up?
Yes.
It doesn't say that in the resolution. It just says for lease, from fire service. I mean, most people, when they lease a car, after two years, they don't own it, we've paid all this money into it, so I just hope that there's something in it, that this is a lease purchase agreement, and and I, and I asked our, has a, is there a preliminary lease right now or anything? Because I I asked our attorney, and it probably should have been attached to this resolution.
Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Markovich, that's a very, very good question, and the answer to that is as follows, there's two types of leases that the city can enter into. One of the types of leases is what you normally think of if you were to lease a copy machine, where you pay a certain amount of money and and you sort of rent it, and you never own the equipment, and in that case, I don't need to come and visit the city council, because the city council wouldn't be the governing body to enter into that sort of agreement, that would be the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety, it would just be a normal contractual relationship. The second type of lease is known as a capital lease, and a capital lease is a type of lease where you s- you you amortize the payment of an asset over a period of time, and you're going to e- uh, own the asset at the end of that period, okay? And this is that second type of lease, okay? We're going to enter into an agreement to own an asset after four or five years. That's why I'm coming in front of the city council, because for that type of negotiation, um, I need the council's approval. Secondly, the terms of the lea- lease haven't been finalized yet, Councilman Markovich, um, lease rates fluctuate daily, and while we've vetted several different banks and gotten quotes on lease rates, depending on the day of the week and the market conditions, one bank may be a better choice on one day, and another bank may be a better choice on another day, so it's all going to depend on after you guys have approved, uh, a- approved this resolution, I'll go back to the banks and revet them, uh, at some point in the very near future to determine wh- which rate is going to be most beneficial to the City of Hammond and the Fire Department.
Mr. Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
It's just like buying a house in reality, but I just want this to be quoted and quoted correctly, when it comes to public safety in the City of Hammond, the police and fire are the number one priority, if there's a fire, I wanna make sure that they have the adequate equipment to get to my house, just like if there's a police officer and there's someone shooting i- on my street, I wanna make sure they have the resources and availability to get there in a timely fashion, so I have to support whatever it is when they come before this legislative body in terms of addressing their needs.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Bobby, I I got a question, says it's gonna be used out of the, oh, the ambulance capital outlay, uh, revenue from the ambulance tran- why do we, can't we just go with a lease directly to the fire, whoever we're buying the engines from, why do we have to have a middleman and pay the the interest with the bank, because if we've got money coming in from the ambulance transport fees, why can't we enter to a lease with them directly where we can eliminate the the interest rate then? Do we have enough funds coming in that we can just pay them off for the sixty-one months? That we don't have to put a middleman in there and then we gotta pay the bank an interest rate then? Is that possible?
It's a very good question, Councilman Markovich, that's typical in the auto industry, if you were to go buy a Chevy, you would finance the Chevy directly with GMAC, the GMAC financing, that's kind of familiar to everybody, unfortunately, the manufacturer of fire trucks doesn't have a financing mechanism. So the manufacturer will recommend a financing vehicle for the city, but what we're doing is instead of using that financing vehicle, which is what many municipalities do, we're going to vet other banks to try and get a better rate than the, um, suggested vehicle, and we have, uh, right now, the the manufacturer, the manufacturer's suggestion, um, they came out with about a two-point-nine percent interest rate, and we've gotten rates down to two-point-four, two-point-five percent, so over, with with a million dollar investment over five years, there's some significant savings, when you can lower the interest rate by just a few basis points.
In other words, they want their money upfront, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Carmen, roll call, vote.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas? Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Hinosa?
Yes.
Opinker?
Yes. Resolution thirteen R fourteen passes, eight zero, one absent. Move on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
First of all, let me speak in regards to the library issue, I know a number of my constituents are present this evening in regards to that particular issue, what needs to happen at this present point is that the library board needs to make an approval of, uh, additional appropriation before they come before this legislative body and get a request, now I have requested my attorney, our attorney and my colleague's attorney, Attorney Berger, to, uh, work with the director of the library in terms of addressing that concern, and I think, uh, for, after analyzing the situation and my colleagues looking into it, I think they're all in agreement that we need to relinquish the money, and that's been brought up in caucus, and the mayor is as well, said that that was, uh, reasonable, and so, and I'm hoping that in in, in the very near future, and hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda, and we'll be able to move forward, and the library will be able to move and do what's necessary for this great city.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
You know, on a side note, on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, Councilman Higgs, Hinosa, myself, met with the library director and all of that for about an hour and a half, and we explained to him what has to be done, you know, they have a wish list, they want computers, they also have the, have the air conditioning condensing unit fixed that has to be repaired, and whatever, uh, other items that need to be done and taken care of, and it's up to the library board first to go ahead and come up with, during one of their meetings and say, "This is what needs to be done with this rainy day fund of money." So they need to take the first step at one of their library board meetings, and then an appropriating ordinance needs to come before the city council where that money can be moved within the budget. They do have a budget, you know, from the previous year, even though we did not approve their, their new budget, they were asking for additional funds to, for the tax rate on there, that that's, that's what was not approved, they still, what had happened is they referred it back to their previous last year's budget, so they do have money to operate. What they do have is like one-point-three million dollars in a rainy day fund that they can access and use that money to transfer over to buy these computers and fix the air conditioning and whatever else has to be done. I know a lot of you are here today, and you're gonna be coming back all the time thinking that they're here for the library, you probably signed in on, on, uh, the public expression, there's no need to do that, I mean, you're still welcome to do that and voice your opinion, you're here, we're here to listen to you, but that's basically where it's at, and and the mayor brought it up in the caucus, the same thing, it was like two separate issues, one was increasing the tax rate, they were capped out of how much money they can raise, but they do have some money there for the reverting, a rainy day fund that they can use to buy all these things that they want and that they need and use. So that's where we're at, and and once the library board does what they're supposed to do, and an appropriating ordinance comes forth, then that can, the the discussion can be made and the money can be transferred over and they can continue on.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
And as I stated before, and it stated in the meetings, I'm willing to, uh, sponsor that particular ordinance, but what needs to be done is the attorney, or the attorneys from the library board needs to work with our attorney to make sure the legislation body is aware of the ordinance and it be presented for our next meeting, and then we can move forward in terms of relinquishing that money so they can operate. I also have a letter that was, uh, submitted to me, and it says, "I am writing to express my concerns about the certain provisions of HB eleven sixteen. The bill will require fiscal body approval of the library budget and property tax levies. Currently, the public library budgets are set and approved by local library boards. Public library budgets are now subject to significant approval of the finan- financial body as long as they are, do not increase by more than a very modest percentage, which is set by law. Furthermore, the public library property tax levies are strictly controlled by property tax caps. The current budget process works very well, the public libraries have long been outstanding stewards of taxpayer dollars, we offer incredible range of resources and services and provide outstanding value for the public funds entrusted to us. The current library budgetary system is not broken, the, the fiscal body approval requirement of HB eleven sixteen is a solution in search of a problem. I urge you to support the continued independence and objectivity of our state public libraries by keeping the management of public libraries in the hands of the local library board. Public libraries have been designated history of being accountable and responsible in to their fellow citizens and taxpayers. Public library trustees are appointed by municipal elected boards, which may recall their appointment. If they aren't satisfied with our appointee's performance, HB eleven six- sixteen would effectively redirect the board fiscal oversight authority from many boards to just one. In counties currently located by the property tax circuit breaker caps, a budget reduction made by the fiscal approval body would not provide taxpayer with a tax relief. A reduction in the library budget would simply defri- divert, excuse me, badly needed educational funds away from the public library to many other taxing authorities. Indiana public libraries are required to meet a levy of state bu- mandated maximum standards concerning collection resources, services, programs, and certification of personnel in order to qualify for certain funds such as telecommunications funding for, to correct to the internet. If the library budget is attributed, attributed, reduction, it could jeopardize the library ability to provide its user with access to public information resources and access to a vital government service. Please vote against any provisions that would subject public library budget's approval by the outstanding fiscal body. Public library boards have earned the respect and continued confidence of the Indiana citizen and should continue to be the independent governing authorities of our public libraries. Sincerely, Angela Gray, Hammond, Indiana."
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we send a letter to code, not code enforcement, into Board of Works and to Engineering in regards to, uh, fixing the light ninety-seven over forty on the sixty-one hundred block of McCook and the sixty-one hundred block of Alexander, there's two lights out, and also the twenty-seven twenty on the hundred-and-sixty-second place, there are lights out, and twenty-six twenty-four, there are lights out on the hundred-and-sixty-second place, I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hinosa, to send a letter, Engineering, regarding lightings, uh, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, to send a letter to the Board of Works regarding a traffic study for a stop sign at Mulberry and Harrison, uh, due to increased traffic flow on Harrison, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Higgs, to send a letter to Engineering in regards to a traffic study on Mulberry and Harrison. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez?
Uh, for those who are interested in doing good in your community and finding out what's happening in your neighborhood, I'd like to announce some upcoming crime watch meetings. Tuesday, April ninth, citywide crime watch meets at the Police Department at six PM. Wednesday, April tenth, Woodmark Crime Watch meets, uh, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at six PM. Thursday, April eleventh, Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch meets at St. Joseph's College at six-thirty. Friday, April twelfth, Irving Community Watch meets eight-thirty AM at Irving School. Tuesday, April sixteenth, East Hammond-Pulmon Crime Watch meets six-thirty PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Wednesday, April seventeenth, Lafayette Neighborhood Watch meets at Lafayette School at six-thirty. Thursday, April eighteenth, South Hammond Crime Watch meets at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at seven PM. And Thursday, April eighteenth, Hessville Crime Watch meets at seven PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time, I look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
A lot of my constituents have addressed me and cons- and with their concerns of a home loan, and I just wanted to, uh, put it out there, and certainly if they're watching, they can be aware of it, what's available through redevelopment, and that is, if you loan, a loan amount of up to thirty-seven thousand dollars eligibility, you must only live in the house, the mortgage only, no contracts, house must be, uh, one unit, must meet current income guidelines, responsible, uh, credit, family size one, thirty-seven fifty, two, forty-two thousand three hundred fifty, three, forty-seven six fifty, four, fifty-two nine, five is fifty-seven one fifty, six is sixty-one four hundred, seven is sixty-five six hundred, and eight is sixty-nine eight fifty. To use the rehab only, property must meet upon completion, federal section eight housing quality standards and local acceptable codes, i.e. mechanical, carpentry, plumbing, heating, HVAC, et cetera, and lead-based paint regulations. Payment, fifty percent deferred for long as you own and live in the house, fifty percent is paid back, zero interest for the agreed term, payment in excess of fifty-five dollars per month for a twenty-five thousand dollar loan for twenty years. Closing costs will be included in the loan amount, closing costs will do, vary, projects credit report is twenty-one dollars, title search is one thirty, appraisal fees is two-seventy-five, LPB assessment is six seventy-five, mortgage recording is forty-three dollars, and payment book is one hundred. Waiting list is one to two years, and what do you do while you're waiting list? Do not file bankruptcy, make sure you are clear title to the property, keep property taxes current, keep homeowners insurance current, reduce credit debit, and keep your credit report clean, and that is basically how you get funded for a home loan.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
Like to give some congratulations to the Team Hammond Robotics Team, which competed in the first robotics Midwest Regional this past weekend, uh, the Team Hammond, uh, team is, uh, consists of Clark, Gavitt, Hammond and Morton High Schools, their competition were, was the Duluth Daredevils out of Duluth High School, uh, Duluth, Minnesota, and the Iron Wolves Perspectives, uh, the IIT Math and Science Academy and Sh- High School in Chicago, Illinois, they won the, uh, Midwest Regional, the Motorola's Quality Award, and the Best Climber, and I assume the climbing is, is done by the robot, not the students, I'm just having some fun with, but congratulations to them. I'm just having some fun with it, but congratulations to them. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Recently, there was three people arrested in a bra at a nightclub in downtown Hammond. And there, you know, it's a lot of activities is going on downtown, so certainly we wanna make sure the police is, uh, protecting the residents. And we do have a charter school down there, so I'm making a motion that we have more police presence, uh, those hours that they're, uh, actually open downtown Hammond, I so move.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Guess your motion fails. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich, I guess maybe they wanted more police protection is what, during the school hours, or was it during the Aquavor hours? See, I think maybe that was the problem, because, uh, usually that place is not open the same time that the school's in session, so maybe there was a discrepancy there.
Mr. President, I think that it's no discrepancy.
Councilman Higgs.
The reality of it is, is that there are a lot of things that are occurring down there, and regardless if the school opened or not, we don't want someone to get, uh, harmed or endangered in the process of this nightclub being open, so we're just asking for more police presence. That's just like anything, if there's something at MLK Park, and I feel it's gonna put people's lives in jeopardy, or is too much going on, and they're doing something illegal or whatever the case may be, we wanna put more police down there to make sure that it's taken care of.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoosa.
I agree with Councilman Higgs, but this is a, this is a privately owned nightclub. Uh, I think it's Aquavor that needs to get more security. Uh, so therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to Aquavor nightclub that they give us the, uh, number of securities, security guards that they have at Aqu, inside of Aquavor, inside and out, and that they, uh, tell us how, how they're gonna relieve, uh, future problems at Aquavor by, uh, supplying themselves extra, extra security at their nightclub.
Motion by Councilman Henoosa, second by Councilman Higgs, to, uh, send Aquavor a letter in regard to their security of police officers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoosa.
I, I believe the article said that there was, uh, 12 squad, squad cars that had to go to Aquavor. Uh, I believe if, if something could have been prevented inside with security inside, uh, maybe we wouldn't have to have 12 squad cars going over there, and it could have been stopped there inside. Uh, that's why I made that motion. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Not only that, the number of phone calls that the police had to respond to in, in a three-month period is unbelievable. Good Lord.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Our first speaker will be Carolyn Jackson.
Good evening, Carolyn Jackson. I would just like to say that I'm very glad that those council members did go to the library and get the opportunity to go on a tour and see that those requests, those that they were, that they made to release the money so that they could do, get on about their business and do the necessary repairs and upkeep, was truly a valid request. And those individuals who did not go, I hope that you all will not only support the vote to release their money, but vote to release their money. And there's still time, if you have doubt, where you can still go and get the opportunity to have the same tours that the other ones did. The other thing that I would like to speak to issue is, it's my understanding that several million dollars are gonna be spent to have Indianapolis Boulevard, uh, resurface or some type of work done to Indianapolis Boulevard. Now, Indianapolis Boulevard, as far as I know of, is a state highway, and I just don't understand with the deficit in the city as such, why are we spending millions of dollars to do, to repair or to re, uh, surface a state highway, when I'm sure that that money can be used here in Hammond somewhere, with so many deficits here? And I can't understand why we cannot wait until the state can come and repair their highway. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening will be Mr. George Stoya.
Given that we've had this potluck here, you guys have served all your entrees, I would like to, uh, serve up some dessert, I know, and I want you to take this very seriously. And I know that we all miss, uh, and mourn perhaps, that the, uh, Crimson and White of Indiana University will not be in the final game today of the NCAA. But I ask you, I urge you to support Michigan, because of the, they're the final Big Ten team. I'll leave you with that.
You're here.
Would I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Higgs, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Boiler up.